The pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission of your God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hafner?
Here.
And Honcho?
Here.
Mrs. Hune?
Here.
Mr. Rightnow?
Here.
It was a three-way tie, and we are really excited to have phenomenal staff to recognize this evening. So first, I'd like to call up Mrs. Amy Sella.
All right, we're gonna shift some things around here. We'll move on to personnel report. Can I get a? Oh, sorry, any public comment? Hearing none. Move on to personnel report. We'll jump ahead in the meeting here. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second, please.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna shift some things around here. We'll move on to personnel report. Can I get a?
Oh, sorry, any public comment?
Hearing none.
Move on to personnel report. We'll jump ahead in the meeting here. Can I get a motion in a second? Thank you.
So thank you for bearing with us. We are gonna go out of order this evening. We have some special recommendations and special guests with us this evening, so we thought we'd do the personnel items first. Under personnel items, we have a few resignations. We have the resignation of our elementary school secretary. We also have the resignation of Mr. Thomas Volker. Mr. Volker has been with us for eleven years. We've been together now in this role as assistant superintendent, different titles along the way for the last ten years. And it has been a truly a pleasure working together. He is such an incredible leader, such an incredible person, and it will absolutely be a loss to the school district for the things that he's been able to do. When you think about the transition that has happened over that time, whether it's strategic planning, or it's our technology, or it's rebranding, and a host of other things that have, we've been able to accomplish. Tom is behind, has been behind a lot of those things. And so it will be with a heavy heart that we lose him, but on the flip side, it will be, it, it, it's one of those bittersweet moments, and we're so excited to build a culture here where we can have people grow into new roles. And to see Tom become a superintendent and to take on that next role and share his leadership wisdom with a whole other school district is just an awesome thing for us as a school district. Be able to send him off to Daniel Boone and be, become that leader that we know he will be truly phenomenal at in the Daniel Boone School District. So we will, I present the letter of resignation for Mr. Volker this evening as we vote on that a little bit later here. As I tailed off with that, that part of it, I, I mentioned it's an awesome opportunity for us to be able to see Tom grow and be able to take on the, the opportunities to become a different person, become a different leader here. And likewise, th- this evening, we also have a chance to elevate two more individuals in our school district. And so tonight, we're gonna be able to, I, I propose and recommend to the board that we take Mrs. Carly Werman, who is currently in an instructional curriculum role, and then elevate her, and we're gonna have her take on technology. And so she'll be doing curriculum, she'll be doing instruction, and she's also gonna be doing technology. And it is an awesome opportunity for her to grow here. She absolutely has the capability to do that. It's been so neat seeing her grow in this school district, starting as an assistant principal, moving into her love of curriculum, and now taking on the curriculum challenge, which she has already did a deep head dive into already, and learning how to know all things about technology, and she's already had, actually established her feet into that along before this was even in the works. So she will be a phenomenal asset to the school district and see her thrive in, in her new position. Likewise, it is an awesome opportunity this evening to see, to recommend Mr. Robert Farina move into the assistant superintendent role. Mr. Farina has been with the district for several years now. Came in as a middle school principal. Anyone that knows Mr. Farina knows the talent that he has, knows the care and compassion and dedication he has to this school district. Seeing him grow into the curriculum role now and take on a little bit more of a, a broader position and overseeing the district has been truly a, a great growing experience and neat for us to be able to see him fit into that and kind of feel his way out and just completely thrive in that capacity as well. I'm really excited to be able to be working with him in this now assistant superintendent role and likewise grow together as he takes on that, that position and becomes a key leader in, in this school district as we move forward together as a school board and as an administrative team. So those are the two major recommendations and shifts that I'd like to present to the board this evening. There are a few other items that are on here. There's the co-curricular appointments. There's a, a few athletic changes that are, have been adjusted here based off of some last-minute moves that happen with coaching positions. Those are recommended this evening. And then the final one is to approve an attorney leave of absence for an employee from August fifteenth until December twenty-first. Those are the personnel items.
Awesome. Any questions, discussions, comments? Hearing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Eisenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hafner? Mr. Honcho?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rightnow?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Reckon?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes.
Congratulations.
All right, going back to section one, Board of Directors' report. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
All right, so we have a couple items under Board of Directors' report this evening. We have some board policies that are up for second reading. There's student debt, public relations, publications of programs, and then public attendance in the school. I presented those at the last meeting. There were really no significant changes, but I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing before any adjustments had to be made for this evening. There are four new policies for first reading this evening. There's a citizens advisory, advisory committee. Really no changes there. There's a public complaints policy. That public complaints policy is a little unique. It actually incorporates a lot of things that are tied to federal programs and federal programs requirements. So those, those are connected to that and some updated language had to be made for that. There's also a visitors' policy that we made some tweaks to based off of some recommendations from P S E A, based off of some practice that we felt was the best, the most prudent pieces that were in there. And so no significant items that are in there, but just some, some changes of procedures that are in there in the policy section. And then relations and with parents and guardians, that, that really had no substantive changes to those policies. Any questions on this, four?
Is that student debt? Is that one in the federal lunge?
Yes, there is a steps process in there for that one.
I agree with your concern. So we want to have as many students participate as possible. I feel reassured based on the feedback from the administration at the last discussion that sort of off the books, if we say it that way, there are practices in place, not policies, but day-to-day procedures, day-to-day practices that are driven sort of by our school culture that ensure that those kids typically find the way to go. So I'm, I'm getting head nods from all of the principals and assistant principals. So policy-wise, I, I think the policy needs to say what it says, but I'm reassured that day-to-day practicality, we're not disadvantaging kids because their families can't come up with twenty or thirty bucks to get them on the field trip.
So, and, and kind of layer on top of that, the other thing we're evaluating right now is to put together almost a, I don't have a great word, but almost like an angel fund that community members can donate to. That way, if there is someone that's in need, they can apply to have some of that paid back to the school district. You have to be careful how you do that. There's a lot of things that are legalities with the food service program, but nonetheless, there is some mechanisms that we're working on right now to collect funds that would then go right back to families that if they truly are in need, can apply and then be able to have that, that paid back so that that can be cleared then by the community, by that community fund.
Any other concerns? All right, moving on to committee reports. Mrs. Hune, B C I U's.
Good evening, everyone. The last meeting of the B C I U Board of Directors was Thursday, March sixteenth. Couple of key highlights. One, the audit, the annual audit was glowing. No concerns financially, no deficiencies. And the B C I U in all of its breadth financially continues to be a low-risk auditee according to Herbine and Company. So that's always a reassuring update. We did spend time going through the governor's proposed budget proposal. In the written report that I submitted, I have some bullet points. I think, Mr. Potager, you may have added as an attachment to the board's weekly update from you, the document that the B C I U prepares that summarizes all of the education-related components of the budget. It's frankly a lot of good news in terms of funding, but of course, it's not approved yet, so we can't get too excited about it. The other item that I wanted to mention, every year, the B C I U does what's called an Annie Sullivan Award, so an annual award focused on the special education educator community. Mrs. Kirchner and Ms. Kelly recommended our Donna Herzog. So the event was held April fifth. It's, it's a really powerful event. It's probably one of the best events each year in terms of giving folks a real understanding of day-to-day, how much value and how much appreciation comes from all of the staff in all of the school districts, supporting kids with I E Ps and kids with special needs. Many schools nominate, and so the way this event goes is the nomin, the nominators provide information to the audience about each of the various nominees. And of course, one candidate or nominee is selected. So our candidate, Donna Herzog, didn't win, but that's okay. It's still a wonderful recognition. Interestingly, who did win was Mrs. Berger. I, I believe it's Danielle Berger, if I'm not mistaken, from Coopstown. Yeah, Danielle Berger from Coopstown, who has relatives in our district, and so she's a face at Brandywine that some of us would recognize, even though she's employed at Coopstown. So anyway, congratulations to Mrs. Herzog, and we, we appreciate all of her efforts. And thank you, Mrs. Kirchner and Ms. Kelly for participating and making the nomination. It's really powerful stuff. Couple of other real quick announcements. So Camp Connect is a program that the B C I U helps coordinate. This is a camp that's free to support young students who have been dealing with grief, so a death in the family. So hopefully, our administration has the flyers that you need for that, but if not, I've got flyers for you. There's a pediatric first aid and CPR training. Again, free program sanctioned and offered through the B C I U. We can sign up and send our staff at any time to take advantage of that. And I believe that's all I had to share. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April twentieth. Any questions or comments? Okay, thanks, everybody.
B C T C, Mr. Sheets, did he give you anything additional?
He did not, no.
All right. B E I T C, Mr. Gierko?
Yeah, so the meeting met on March thirtieth. It was a relatively short meeting. We reviewed the audited financial statements for David County Year end December first. This is privileged tax code, which is not relevant to Brandywine School District. And they also reminded us that we need to turn in our payment on January first. That are due. So the next meeting is scheduled for July eighth.
Thank you. Cola?
So there are a couple items in Cola. If you look at the, the attached document that's in your agenda, we had a meeting ironically enough this morning. That was the PASB Director, Hannah Barrett, was there. And so just a few things I'd like to point out. One of the things that the state's focusing on with the new governor is they're looking at audits. So the exciting news for us is there's going to be more audits that are coming. Right now, we are feeling audit exhausted because we have food service audits, we have S R audits. Any federal programs have been audited to the nth degree. Special education audits. But none of those are really the, the P D E or P A school code-type audits of bus evacuation drills and all those things we have to do and report on. And so they're looking at more of those, wrong word, but programmatic type audits that we're supposed to be doing as part of the school code, and they're creating a whole branch in P D E to put more auditing on the school district. So that's gonna be really exciting. Can't wait for that to happen. Similarly to what Mrs. Hune reported, a lot of time was spent talking about the, the governor's proposal in the, for the, the next budget session, particularly in relation to education. Two, three, three things this will highlight. Pre-K funding is looking to, to have an expansion onto that. If that goes through or not, it would move ten thousand dollars a child to eleven thousand dollars a child. That's a thirty billion dollar increase. Looking at a hundred million dollar line item for mental health. They're not sure how that's gonna be rolled out as, as was shared today, but it's gonna shift from one organization in the state P C C D to P D E. And so that has, at the state level, has caused a bunch of ripples of why they're doing that and some other questions. But that would be actually really good dollars that would be coming back to the school districts to support mental health and that we definitely are seeing an increase in mental health concerns within our student body. So that would be phenomenal. And then the final thing I'd like to highlight is there is thirty-eight and a half million dollars for support offset meals. It's free breakfast. The proposal is free breakfast for all students. And then lunch, if you're free, of course, you're free. If you're reduced, it would be free. But then if you're regular paying, it would be regular paying. So that's thirty and a half million. There's a lot of push and a lot of growing momentum, though, to have universal free lunch for everybody. And if they did that, that would be, that would be a cost of two hundred million. And so that's the big difference between the thirty-eight million for free breakfast and partial free lunch versus the two million for free breakfast and then universal free lunch for everybody. Seems to be growing momentum at the state level for that, but that's not in the budget. So that, that was a big talking point. The other one, just to keep your eye on, if you hear the words "level up funding", that is something that is not in the governor's proposal. It's been in the governor's proposal for the last few budgets. The essential, the idea behind that is they take the poorer districts and dump a lot of money into those poorer districts. It's only a hundred to two hundred school districts, so it's not equally spent, it's not equally distributed. If that would happen, and there seems to be some growing momentum to go back to that, it would take out of the pool of money that is established for all school districts and take, let's just, whatever the amount is, five hundred million or whatever they take out of it to go to those one hundred specific school districts. And so the rest of us would lose out on what our allocation is. So if you hear "level up funding", just pay attention to that because that will negatively impact us as a small district. We're not rural enough, we're not poor enough, we're not, we just don't have the, we're, we're too rich. We just don't have the demographics to be able to pull in when they, when they go through the formula, the funding formula. Uh but then if you're regular paying, it would be regular paying. So that's thirty and a half million. There's a lot of push and a lot of grow- growing momentum, though. To have universal free lunch for everybody. Uh and if they did that, that would be, that would be a cost of two hundred million. And so that's the big difference between the the thirty eight million for free breakfast. And partial free lunch versus the two million for free breakfast and then universal free lunch for everybody. Seems to be growing momentum at the state level for that, but that's not in the budget, so that that was a big talking point. The other one, just to keep your eye on, if you hear the words level up funding. Um that is something that is not in the governor's proposal. It's been in the governor's proposal for the last few um budgets. The essential, the idea behind that is they take the poorer districts and dump. A lot of money into those poor districts. It's only a hundred to two hundred school districts, so it's not equally spent. It's not equally uh distributed. If that would happen, and there seems to be some growing momentum to go back to that. It would take out of the pool of money that is established for all school districts and take. Let's just whatever the amount is, five hundred million or whatever they take out of it, to go to those one hundred specific school districts. And so the rest of us would lose out on what our allocation is. So if you hear level up funding, just pay attention to that, because that will negatively impact us as a small district. We're not rural enough, we're not poor enough, we're not, we just don't have the demo- we're we're too rich. Um we just don't have the demographics to be able to pull in when they, when they go through the formula, the funding formula. A lot of those ancillary things that would give you, for lack of better, were more points or more money. Um and so that is definitely something to be, to be mindful of. And then just another side note that was mentioned, and this has nothing to do with with really anything there, but there's, they said there was three hundred bills a day. Introduced in the Capitol. I found that number to be astonishing, but yeah, so the the idea is that it goes into the different committees, whether it's Education Committee or whatever. And then they get processed and then pushed out, but I I was really flabbergasted to hear that number of three hundred bills a day, so. I guess you can't say that your legislators aren't working for you. That is the end of the uh Cola report from this morning.
Alright, the floor is still yours for Policy Committee and Strategic Planning and Goals.
Policy Committee, uh you saw the policies earlier, no, no other news besides that, uh strategic planning. We are working through finalizing uh the goals for the year. And we'll be able to, our goal is to be able to come back at the May meeting and present uh the end of year goals. Some of those might not be completely flushed out because there'll be a month left to school. But we, we thought we'd try to do that and target the May meeting instead of the 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 middle of June. Uh because we know it's, you know, we'll be doing the the end of year evaluations with administrators and with uh myself. And so we thought it'd be good to get those goals to you ahead of time. Uh again, there'll be some that maybe aren't completely finalized or finished. Uh we'll provide that status update through that process, but at the May meeting, we'll do the goals update.
Alright, can see officially hijack committee reports.
Yep, no, no uh negotiations, conversation committee, and then building construction committee. Uh so some updates there. We met with Keystone Construction about three, four weeks ago. And um that was kind of the final meeting with them. Uh they, they started when we first met with them with a price of. One point eight to to two point one billion about that ballpark, and there was a representative came to several of our meetings. Of course, we switched locations and uh because of D E P regulations, I went over to the high school. And from that point on, the price just continued to climb. The final proposal, when we were uh at our last meeting together, was uh three point four million. So it went from that one point eight to escalating to three point four with essentially the same services that we had originally sought out the first time. So the the committee took a step back, uh reevaluated where we were, know- knowing that the district just doesn't have that kind of funds to be able to do a project. That's of of that extent, uh and even to do a bare bones project uh was out of our our cost range. So took a step back, reevaluated. Uh there is a meeting on Friday with the committee. And the committee is going to be uh looking at partnering with, potentially, uh hearing out uh an architect. It's a local architect firm that uh does essentially work nationally, uh and it might be a good opportunity to partner with a, partner with a local firm. Uh and local community, who who actually resides in in the community uh to be able to uh tap in their expertise and. And partner with us for the school district. So that meeting is on Friday. Some decisions on that point of will we move forward with that or not, we'll, we'll kind of come out of that. Uh and we'll, we'll uh proceed from there and come back to the floor with some more information.
Thank you. Any uh further questions, discussions? Here is one. Are they gonna roll call, please?
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Honchel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stupid?
Just to piggyback on that, as long as we've kind of had the conversation through the budget meeting with a one and a half percent tax increase and then using the P's or is two of the thousand on that offsets some of those pieces. We're gonna really work to get that two twelve number and just maybe be able to kind of clean that out. I think we'll be in a pretty good spot if we can get us that. But you'll next thing you'll see this is that may more mean you would actually be a proposed preliminary.
Proposed final, yeah.
Proposed final budget, so those two key items, the one point five to two hundred would be in there. So we should make sure that you had a clear picture of where we are right now and where we're headed. With the goal that we're gonna be able to find a way to, as Nicole just mentioned, a lot of new parts to get that two twelve cleaned up.
So with the P's respond and the unassigned, we're not transferring that unless it's needed, or are we transferring that regardless?
So essentially, it's a paper entry at this point, like July one, it'll be a paper entry. And then it comes to the end of the year and typically we have a surplus, we don't have to use it.
That was my thought.
Yeah, so it's worst case, we need to use it.
So if we particularly showing like your shy million dollar surplus annually.
Yeah.
Uh about five hundred and seven fifty somewhere. So potentially would may not be short at all.
Correct, they would just go back to their buckets.
To that point, though, Mr. Wagner, we've already implemented the tax increase. Do you see what I mean? So it goes back to the district savings account, if you will, the district buckets. But it never goes back to our taxpayers.
Correct.
So, go ahead.
My concern more is using savings to property costs. So if we're not actually having to use it properly because I feel much better than if we're tapping into our savings to conduct revenues.
Agreed. Also, to that point, would you be willing to put the first slide up, I think it was? I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So we've got the years across the top. And then, you know, on on the left side, we've got the categories. So the bottom category, ending fund balance. So for the current year budget, we budgeted about seven and a half million dollars in ending fund balance, right? And then as the year carried on, that number increases to the point where March twenty seventh, we were at nine point eight million dollars in ending fund balance. Help me understand that sort of growth in fund balance throughout the year.
Yeah, so if you, you might not be able to see it just because it prints smaller. But on the first column, you'll see twenty two, twenty three budget. So that was our starting point when we built this current year's budget last year. And you'll see our beginning fund balance was nine million. And then our shortfall was the one point five million. So you subtract that off the beginning and that was your projected ending fund balance. So when we we send it to the state, that's what we would report. So then the first two columns are essentially comparing one another. So the February thirteenth one is our beginning, where we started this year. So our beginning fund balance as of June thirtieth last year was ten mil- ten point three million. Our shortfall was one point four. So essentially you take that off the ten point three. But you'll see columns two, three, four, and the blue one, which is today. They all are ten point three. So that's this year's budget that we're building. So you see how beginning fund balance is always the same. That's June thirtieth as of last year. And then depending on what the shortfall is, you'll see the ending fund balance change. So as our deficit got smaller, our fund balance kind of creeps back up closer to the ten point three.
Okay, so I I think I am interpreting it correctly. So to your point, the beginning fund balance, when we did our initial budget this time last year, we we were thinking we had about nine million dollars in this savings account, quote unquote, right? Beginning fund balance. Where we actually landed was one point four, almost one point three eight million more than that, right? So from nine million to ten point three eight million, I'm I'm on the road beginning fund balance. So we underestimated rather significantly how much excess money we'd have. Right? I'm just looking for validation, am I thinking about this right? And then when you look at ending fund balance, it's essentially the same thing. We sort of underestimate where we're gonna land. We started all the way to the left at seven point five million. And where we land is much closer to nine and a half million. So this is where I struggle, right? So we we can't ever overspend our budget. So we always want to be robust in our estimates because we we can't get ourselves in a pickle, right? But every year, year after year after year, we end up taxing to generate revenue, doing a really good job administratively, not overspending. And we end up at the end of the year with a bucket of money that then we put in the savings account. And we do that over and over and over. And I I just, I struggle with the point that it's it's a paper thing, it's on paper. But frankly, at the end of the year, it's no longer on paper. We've benefited from that. And we've taxed our community when we really didn't have to to fund our programs at the district. So I'm more for supporting all the programs. But I'm I I'm not for generating revenue that doesn't get spent year after year after year. So I mean, a little bit of that is good because that creates a cushion and everybody should have a savings account and an emergency fund and all that good stuff. But at what level do we start saying, um, we have enough? We have enough to take care of our programs, to take care of our staff, to take care of our facilities, to take care of our people and our kids. We don't need to keep generating excess revenue.
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of ways to look at it. I mean, right now, we're essentially budgeting at a shortfall of two hundred thousand, say we use the P's. So I think as a board, there has to be some comfort level of how much you're willing to budget as a shortfall. I would say in some cases, I would say the last few years, a lot of, there's quite a few things during the COVID era that have not materialized, where you're getting these larger than normal numbers come in. But I would say we as a district, we don't budget. Some people do it via budgetary reserve, but budget, you know, half a million, one million dollars. And that's how they fund their capital reserve. So for Andy, I'm just taking the stance of we don't set aside pages, set them out. We just do whatever, you know, the end of the year surplus is, and that's what funds our capital reserve. So I think as a district, if we don't want to see these amounts at the end of the year, we have to find some other way to essentially fund our capital reserve. Because that's where we do the construction work out of or the ongoing larger projects. So if you want to essentially come in at zero at the end of the year, at some way, you have to find a way to fund capital reserve. I think that would be the other way to look at it as well.
The the thing to flipside is if you go four, three or four slides where we were just at. This is kind of the beginning gang to that conversation where you have the budget that is developed, which is not, it's the real numbers. We we can pick up, we can go through and pick up any line and say, and justify to the penny why that was budgeted that way. It's not, there's not like, well, that's that ten percent on there. Just that cushion, like they're true numbers, but staffing is the biggest thing. Nicole has that down to a penny for each thing, each and every three hundred people that are in this school district. That's the driver of the majority of this when we look at that salaries and benefits. Those are the pieces that you develop the budget based off of your known factors and the costs that you have. And it comes out with this, okay, we're still short four hundred twelve thousand. And I get to your point where you see an increase of last year was, you know, I don't remember what the outcome was, but core fund balance, we had a pretty significant, uh, good year for us that that year in terms of funding the fund balance. But that's kind of the struggle here is where here what you're saying, on the flip side, we're looking at this and saying, okay, for this year, what do we do? Because we have still four hundred twelve thousand. And I think Mike, to your point, that's why I started off and saying, you do the tax increase to two hundred. I don't, I don't want to use this number in the fund balance because I don't want this to have a recurring, we're paying, we're using savings to pay for salaries or personnel or electric or something like that. There's, there's pieces that you don't want to use your savings account to pay for ongoing bills. That's, that's my concern about using, having fund downs pick up the cost. P's are not mine because there's a P's, there's that account set up for P's. We know it's gonna set up until twenty thirty three when it decides to drop off. And then, you know, that starts to wash itself out eventually.
So if we didn't do the tax increase, it would be a rough number, seven, seven twenty one deficit.
Yes.
Which would run us close to what we're putting away.
Yes.
Can I get a clarification? Your two hundred and twelve, two ninety seven there on the other side, use the fund balance. Is, is, is that remember ATNA? I mean, that that four hundred and twelve, two ninety seven was at five hundred and twelve or something. I can't remember yet. We have not reduced that somehow through our budgetary process or whatever. So we're at four twelve now and we're saying we don't want to use a two twelve from the unassigned fund balance to get it down to zero.
That's what I'm saying, I I prefer not to use that two twelve.
Could I ask a question for clarity, please? Previously this evening, we approved two positions, which we know are going to project a certain amount of savings, really close to that two, two twelve. Can that be used in lieu of the two twelve to offset?
That's already.
It's already there.
It's already in?
Yeah.
And the the savings from that five, I think it's five seventy number, that was about four twelve. The group we talked about creating special education classroom at the elementary school and bringing back out of district placements. That's what's a big driver of that cost reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Because we created that program, we cut three out of district placements and we're implementing the districts back.
Okay, so we're sitting at four twelve currently, which is less than we had a week or so ago.
Yeah.
That's a true number.
Well, what isn't factored in, and correct me if I misunderstand, please, is some of the funding that we might get from the state when this budget, when the governor, governor's budget ultimately passes. And so it's very unpredictable and we don't want to count on all of it and all that kind of stuff. But can you help us understand, is any of this extra grant money or funding factored in at all?
So I use the numbers that PASBO had released to business managers for the basic ed and special ed. There is a survey that went around amongst all the business managers essentially asking, you know, what was your take on it? What's your stance? How are you budgeting? So we're all basically doing the same thing for basic ed and special ed. So for us, that was about three hundred thousand. But we did not touch any of those ancillary buckets that are out there, whether it be, you know, maintenance, uh, mental health, PCCD, safety, security. Because honestly, we don't know, one, will they be passed? And are they grants or are they money just given to us? And when they're grants, they don't really help bring down our deficit. They essentially increase revenues, they increase expenses versus money just given to us, you know, helps offset costs. So essentially, almost all the business managers have not budgeted any of that. We really just budgeted what PASBO had given to us for basic ed and special ed.
And the challenge is we, it's likely we won't get the answer to that until after we, we as a board have to vote on this. And so we have to be conservative in terms of revenue.
Correct.
We can't, we can't overestimate revenue because if the state budget doesn't deliver on that revenue now, we're, we're really jammed up.
Correct, so essentially they're a month behind. There's talks now whether, will you do the tests June thirty?
That that was part of the conversation, that they told all the staff about the vacation.
You said it again?
They told the staff it's not to take vacations in July.
Who?
At the state, where we have that.
The folks working on the budget.
June first. G L. You see, this, this is where we get stuck. Okay? We're doing our job to our due diligence as every school board and the state probably is trying to do. But every year, every year, the state sits there on that big fat, you know what? And just pushes it down the road. And we're forced then to do exactly what the student is trying to avoid and I agree with. We have control, but we don't have control. And it all starts in parents. I don't know how many times I've sat and listened to this same problem over and over, every year, every year.
So Mr. Hefner asked an example, the BCIU, which is so incredibly dependent on state and federal funding. They don't, they can't tax, right? So they have no revenue stream other than grants and federal and state funding. The BCIU, in this situation, year after year, has to take out what's called a RAN, a revenue anticipation note. Because if the programs aren't approved, they still have to run the programs. So they basically have to borrow from a bank and pay the interest cost against that loan in order to run their programs until the state in August or September ultimately passes and pays.
I think it'd be nice to get our representative to sit in here to let him hear our persuasion, that's some meeting in the future. And invite the public to come in. I mean, I get little emails from all of them and I try to respond to them and I don't get much response sometimes. I don't have time to go to their meeting here or there and listen to them as they hand out sentimental checks. That's some of the centers I've done in the past, which I was.
Well, I didn't mean to bring up a rat's nest, but I mean, an important discussion. No, no, I, it's an important discussion. So I do have a couple of other questions on the content. The first thing I I just want to make a comment. And so, you know, this time of year, we get all these operational and facilities like contractor renewal. So I want to give the team props and kudos. You know, each increase, hundred and fifty five dollars, twenty five, I mean, the number, the dollar amount of the increases is really quite minimal. Get in an inflation environment of seven and a half or whatever the number is percent. So Mr. Wetzel, in particular, negotiating for the trash piece, saving the district twenty five thousand dollars just because he was willing to make a couple of additional phone calls and and, you know, move some levers. So fantastic job on the business office and the facilities team. Really appreciate that. It would help me, we had a board practice in the past on these agendas to include in the documentation, the the amount of those increases. So I appreciate you verbally sharing that, thank you very much, it's helpful. But I would also ask that we get back to our prior practice of reflecting that information as part of each voting agenda item. And then specifically, I have just a couple of quick, excuse me, quick questions. The flooring one, which is item H, four and five. So I I click through the various contracts. Nowhere on those contracts does it say what kind of square footage we're, we're covering. It just gives us the value of the contract and yep, they're gonna put down carpet or they're gonna put down tile. It's hard to know, are we getting a good deal or not? And obviously, we trust you guys to negotiate, to the point I just made, to negotiate really well. But when I look at it, for example, it's just really hard to gauge. The concession stand in this building, to me, seems like a much smaller space, square footage wise, than a STEM classroom must be. And yet, the cost to redo the floor in the concession stand is way higher than the cost in some of the classrooms. Maybe I'm misinterpreting what I'm reading. But I'm just trying to understand how, how is that particular project being approached?
So unfortunately, Mr. Wetzel is not here. But just from speaking with him, I know there was two other, two other vendors that he essentially reached out to for proposals. And Division Nine was the lowest of those, so we went forward with them and they are a co-star gender. I would say with the concession stand, I believe there is a different type of flooring that has to go in there just because of our retarded and just the amount of equipment that's on it. But unfortunately, you could probably speak to that better. And I think that was why that cost is slightly higher than the others. And he would have all the square footage.
Okay, maybe you'd work with him just to follow up and, yeah, send it our way. The, the documentation doesn't reflect that it's a different type of flooring. So at minimum, to me, when we sign a contract, I would think we would want to specify, they're gonna give us this product for this reason and this amount of it. So like scope is sort of missing on the, on that particular company's contracts. But if you guys have vetted it, then, you know, your job is to make sure that all the I's are dotted and T's are crossed. So the number nine item is a software package, web-based solution. When I first read it, it sounded like it was new to me. But you indicated that it was just a hundred and fifty five dollar increase year over year. So clearly, it's not a new software package. This is the existing software package that we manage all these facilities requests with, correct?
Correct, I think it's about three to four years old at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you, those were the two questions I had on the list, appreciate it.
That could be a big slop in base after June first.
Well, this is another example of a contract. When I read it, again, I'm not a lawyer, but when I read it, it says there's a, there's a factor that says if fuel prices get so high, then we get dinged, we'll have to pay X dollars more per day. But there's nothing in there that specifies what benchmark are we using to deter, to track fuel? And as of, are we gonna check it daily? Are we gonna check it monthly? Like, how, how do you measure whether it's moved enough to trigger these price increases? So again, not a lawyer, not a contract expert, but as a layperson, I read that and I go, that's wide open for interpretation. And I can imagine that in a really strongly rising fuel price environment, if, if we start getting dinged, we have no legs to fight back. They can say, oh, yeah, fuel rose. Well, how about we set, like, it, it would be like getting a bank, a variable rate bank loan with no information about how the interest rate is determined and when it changes. I mean, this is basically, we're signing up for a variable rate fuel assessment in a certain crazy rate environment, but with no terms and conditions around it. So I don't, I don't know.
If, if anything concerns me, that concern, the, the day-to-day process of what's going on in the world today, especially the energy sector, Saudi Arabia.
Yes. Twenty eight, but yes. Yep. Perfect. Thank you. So as this board knows, I really enjoy strategic planning and that's actually not sarcastic. I really enjoy the process. And at Brandywine Heights, we have a really nice process that makes sure that we're always forward looking. That help, it helps with our budgeting process. But somewhat similar in a parallel fashion, PDE actually requires something known as a comprehensive plan. That is something that we're required to submit every three years. So what we do as a school district is we still move forward with our district strategic planning process, but we weave in components that are required as part of PDE's comprehensive plan. And this is something that we are required to bring to the board, required to get board approval on, not today. Required to make sure it is publicly facing for at least twenty eight days. So after today's board presentation, we'll have it posted on our website and encourage people to go there and review it. So I thought it'd be beneficial if I just walked you through at a high level, what is really contained within this document itself. So again, everything I, I just kind of went over is on this first slide here, providing you that overview. It is something that's required to do every three years when it's all said and done. It does create a rather large document that is somewhat cumbersome to read through. But if anyone's super tired and needs something to put them to sleep, by all means, it's really enjoyable. And there are multiple components that go into this. So before you even get to the actual comprehensive planning document, there are three other reports that you're required to do. One, it talks about standards. I just gave it the title instruction because it asks things that are beyond just standards. So it does ask, are you covering all the required standards? And you go through and you tick different boxes. And I just gave a screenshot up here so you can see what that looks like when you're done ticking all the boxes, what that shows. And I'm happy to share, we're in compliance, everything that we are required to cover in terms of standards, we do cover. And then when it goes into curriculum, you have appropriate curriculum written for all the required courses. Yes, we do. Are teachers being evaluated properly? Absolutely. Do they have the proper certification? Yes. So we go through and we tick all of these boxes and that's one of the reports. The next report is really centered around induction. And typically the way the comprehensive planning works is you're actually supposed to be completed by March thirtieth. That's after your second, your twenty eight day window. It should be March thirtieth. However, so many laws have changed this past year that they have delayed the due date until October thirty first. However, we have already been so far down this path, we were just about done when a lot of the legislation has changed. And I also want to make sure that I tie up as many loose ends as possible before my transition out. So that's why we're going through this process right now, which it would be the, I believe it's a June twelfth board meeting, which is when we actually hit the, the formal adoption of the comprehensive plan. So the induction plan, recent legislation has come out that now says it is required to be a two-year induction plan, which is actually beneficial. It's, it's not bad. That is somewhat an LEA decision. So we decided to draw the line and say, new teachers, as we traditionally think about new teachers, you're required to have a two-year induction program. However, if we are receiving a teacher that's coming to us that already has tenure in Pennsylvania, so what we'd refer to as a quasi-veteran teacher, we can put them through a one-year induction plan. And all of that is laid out within our induction plan itself. So again, we go through, we check boxes. Is this in place? Yes, yes, yes. Are mentors properly identified? Yes. What does the plan look like? We, we lay out the whole plan. Does it expand upon their knowledge of professional ethics? Which is a really big component now as part of recent legislation. Absolutely it does. The professional ethics has, has recently changed. And then how do we go through and evaluate that plan in an ongoing basis? So we provide all that information and nothing really is new there. We, we had all the systems in place and we just had to make a couple of tweaks due to recent legislative changes. And then we get into the professional development component. So this is the third report. Outside of, and you will see in your, your board agenda, there are other, two other assurances we have to provide. One is about student services, special education, and then another is about gifted, which is just saying, are you doing what you're supposed to do? And Mrs. Carter goes through and she itemizes everything that we are required to do. We check all the yes boxes. There's nothing significant to go over for that, but professional development, there is. There are a number of things that are required for us to provide in terms of professional development in an ongoing basis, basically starting next year, moving forward. Some of those things, you might hear these terms about culturally relevant and sustaining education programs. If you hear about those things, it's not because this is Brandywine Heights idea. It is because this is something that we are required to provide. Structured literacy program. Again, you're going to hear about these things because it is required for all schools within Pennsylvania to do. We've actually partnered with Quitztown University and surrounding school districts to kind of draw out, what does a quality structured literacy program look like? What we have established in school is great, but this is more mapping out the bigger picture. It's good work that's going on, but again, that's going to be part of work that we do moving forward. Do we align our needs based on assessment observation data? Of course we do. We're very data driven. But we go through and we check all those boxes. Will the plans be reviewed annually? If so, by whom? All of that stuff, we're able to just go and identify. We have a professional development committee, all of those fun things. Is there a question? Yep. Yes. So admittedly, the Pennsylvania Department of Education comes out with rules and regulations before they come out with the details. So we are still waiting on some of those specifics from PDE. As soon as we do have those specifics, we'll be happy to share those with you. But more or less, it's, it's talking about equity and, and equity in the terms of, in the terms of making sure that students have equal opportunities or equitable opportunities, I should say. So students that, and again, this, this is actually one of the really nice things about a public school. And Brandywine Heights sees this a fair amount. We do have a pretty large divide between the haves and the have-nots. So when we talk about hotspots, that's a great thing that we do for students that don't have internet access otherwise. And that digital divide is a very real thing. So really that's, that's some of the things that it's talking about there. I do know that that's a bit of a sensitive subject. So as we have more information from PDE, we'll be happy to share that information with you. Okay? Mr. Preon will have it blast. Yeah. So further guidance will be coming out from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Yep, you're welcome. So after we go through all of those ancillary reports, we actually get to the comprehensive plan itself, which is not a bad process to go through, but it's one of those things I'm extremely proud to kind of share that we go through on our own in an annual ongoing basis. So what they do is they ask you to review your data, which again, we do. Specifically, we were looking at academic behavioral and special education data. And after going through all of that information, there are a couple of things that stood out. And I have those things highlighted here. Green generally is, oh, these are good data sets. Red, these are things we need to make sure that we keep an eye on. So I am going to read through these so you can understand how we get to our next action items. But our third grade ELA and math PSSA data was the highest in the county. That was something that stood out. Our seventh grade PSSA data historically stands out as very strong. Sixth and eighth grade, they continually seem to, and we're talking about all subject matters, they continually struggle a little bit. When we take a look at proficiency gaps, so students that are beyond, are, are not where they're supposed to be. It's not good enough anymore for them just to make one year's worth of growth because if they make one year's worth of growth and they're still beyond, behind, they're not closing the gap. They're staying behind. Students taking the algebra exam, the algebra keystone exam, they are not meeting our growth standard. Students taking the, the biology keystone exam are exceeding the growth standard. Students are consistently reaching that career standards benchmark, which those are the new CEW standards, making sure we're talking about future employment opportunities, really all the way down to elementary school. So there's certain boxes we have to check there, make sure that students are getting access to that information. And then we have many, relative to our size, we have many, many dual enrollment opportunities for our students. That's something that I think we can celebrate as a district. And then we have students receiving special education services are unproportionately suspended. So when you take a look at their suspension rate, it's higher than it really should be. And then when you take a look at students identified as economically disadvantaged, that's what ED stands for. They consistently perform about ten percent lower on standardized assessments than the quote-unquote regular population. So those are items that stood out. So when you take a look and you can kind of just see, I'm just going to toggle back and forth between the two. I took a look at what are all of those data sets that we have and what are the, the, the largest priority items that we have? So in taking a look at that, we saw that students that have a proficiency gap, so students that are behind where they're supposed to be, they're not making enough gains. And again, if you think back to what has been presented as the number one biggest game changer this year, it's been talking about that multi-tiered system of support. Again, we don't wait for three years to figure out what it is we're going to do moving forward. We keep an eye on the data. We make adjustments based on that information. We adjust staffing, we adjust the budget. And again, when we talk about that multi-tiered system of support, ensuring students that have needs are getting what it is that they need, that's what that is aligned to. And then the second item that we have highlighted is talking about students receiving special education services unproportionally suspended. This is talking about some of our next steps that we're doing in terms of our multi-tiered system of support we have for academics. We're going to also include a behavioral component for next school year. So we've been doing a lot of work this year, making sure that that's on track to be rolled out for next school year. And that is something that we're very much on track for. Still a lot of work to do, but the, the team is, is moving forward. And you will be hearing more about that at the board level in the somewhat near future. So again, when you talk about the action steps that we have laid out based on this comprehensive planning process, we're going to continue to implement our MTSS process. And then we're going to include both a behavioral and social emotional MTSS process moving forward with a heavy emphasis on tier one instruction. And to de-jargonize that, what that really means is what it is that our core teachers are doing within the classroom. Not just when a student goes out to receive supplemental intervention support, but the supports that that core teacher is doing within their classroom. That's where we're going to continue to focus our efforts for two reasons. One, that is where students should be receiving, about eighty percent of our students should be able to be successful without having to receive any other additional supplemental intervention services. And two is really tier two and tier three are indicators of the health of our tier one service. So if we have quality and robust tier one service, we're not going to need as much tier two and tier three. And we do know the way that we're paying for a lot of our two tier, tier two and three intervention services is through ESR dollars. And we know that those ESR dollars are drying up at the end of next school year. So all of those reasons support why we need to continue to focus on that tier one instruction. So those are the components that have come out of the comprehensive plan, as you can hopefully hear. It is directly aligned with the work that we've been doing in terms of our strategic planning process. But there are different forms that we have to complete as part of the comprehensive planning process required by PDE. Questions, comments, concerns? Absolutely.
I can imagine that that, the faculty hasn't paid or thought or feeling about that. So.
Sure. So the biggest feedback component so far has really, bless you, been about the behavioral support moving forward. So I think across the district, everybody's recognizing that our students need something a little different. Maybe not more or less, just something a little different than what it is that we're currently doing to try to make sure that some behavioral concerns are addressed in a more supportive manner so we can maximize that instructional time. So based on all the feedback I've been receiving so far, when we talk about what we're planning on doing moving forward, that's been the number one feedback piece is the amount, that surprised me, was the amount of support that's in place for focused professional development on the behavioral side of the house. So I think everything's relative, right? So I don't want to stand up here and say we don't have behavioral concerns. I also don't want to stand up here and make it sound like the, the sky is falling. We have students that have some very specific needs. And I, I think the way that we support our students is, is good, but we're not just looking to be good. You know, there are some students that need a little bit more than we're currently able to provide. You know, there are some students that need a little bit more than we're currently able to provide for them. But by shifting some of our approaches, I think we're gonna be able to support those students a little bit better.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Holger would also um mentioning in regards to your question with surveying staff. So I've worked with a group of peers from the district. So we have our psychologists, our behavioral support teachers, um myself, uh our intervention teachers, uh most recently in the last three months, um to really look at this uh behavioral side of the MTSS model. So we are looking at rolling out a survey, which we're gonna be sharing with our admin team tomorrow and then um looking to propose that to the board next month for staff to gather that input even further to help develop some of the professional development moving forward into next year. So we'll have a better pulse, unlike where that um specifically is at um more in the neck for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments?
I have a question on the enrollment report, if that's okay. There was a information shared, I think fairly recently at at a forum like this around our number of homeschooled students. Would you be willing to share that again, just to make sure that's sort of the framework for my next question?
I remember right, it was 113 students.
So it's a, it's a.
It's over 100.
Yeah, it's not insignificant number of students who are being homeschooled in our district. So as I thought about that, I started wondering how we reflect that on our enrollment report. So maybe somebody can help me with the numbers, like where do we reflect the fact that there's 100 plus of our 13, 1200 some students? I can't find the total, that are not in our buildings. We reflect very clearly and have for a really long time, Mrs. Honnich's world in the virtual academy. And we track those students and we track those numbers and we pay attention to that group of kids that's not in a traditional classroom. But if we've got 100 of our 1200 kids that aren't in our buildings at all, like, I don't wanna say ever, because I'm sure they come for sports and music and stuff like that. But where's that reflected in our numbers?
It it's not because they're not enrolled, they're not students of ours. They're they're not in the books at all. They're not, they're not a reading white student.
So they don't get a Brandywine diploma? My understanding was that a homeschooled student, if they follow a certain protocol and you guys approve that protocol, that curriculum, they get a a graduation certificate, diploma.
Remember when we created the virtual academy, that was one of the selling points or the first point was that they would would get a Brandywine diploma. But a homeschool is basically like a private school, separate, nothing from us.
So these students don't get a diploma, where where do they get a diploma from?
I imagine they lead to the G D D.
They can apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Education to get a diploma through the state.
Okay, so they're living and working and the families are living and working in our community. But for whatever series of reasons, they choose not to entrust the education of their children to this district. And that number is growing compared to the past, is that correct?
It grew after COVID.
Okay.
COVID is the trigger for that.
Okay, so the trigger for the growth, there's always been a pool of folks.
Yes.
Right, okay. So is anybody else intrigued by that? Like, I feel like I wanna track that, I wanna know more about why are these families not using free public education?
They're paying, they're paying. The homeschoolers, parents of the homeschoolers, if they own property are not getting a free, they're paying their property taxes and and that benefit, they come to get.
Precisely my point, Mr. Hefner. So they're paying property tax if they own property in the district and aren't renters. They're paying property tax to fund this, our district. And they're not taking advantage of it. So it makes me wonder, what is the bias there? And I'm sure it's diverse reasons, probably all sorts of reasons. But I imagine that there's a pattern that might be intriguing for us as a board to try and better understand.
I wish I had a great answer for you. I know there are families that do a phenomenal job with homeschool education. And then some of those teams are involved in the school life, because they can create the school like, like sports teams or. The the rules and regulations associated with homeschooling have really swung in the way of homeschool families. Or they would have to provide a curriculum, a curriculum proposal to the school district. And we had the right to say, yes, this is on level with the third grade education or whatever it might be. And then at the end of the school year, they had to have a, basically a third party educator validate that and then had to provide a portfolio of other evidence of how they met those standards.
That's what I was remembering, yeah.
That that is no longer the case. All they have to do is give us what their set standards are at the beginning of the school year. And we do not get to see the outcome of, did they beat those benchmarks or not? Essentially, Mr. Holger's one deals with that primarily, but there's really not much teeth left in the validation of an education from a homeschool family by the school district.
Was that a regulatory change, like a legal change?
Well, yeah, legislative, legislative question.
It just strikes me as rather intriguing, it's almost the opposite of the whole mandates piece, right? Pennsylvania Department of Education is mandating, you know, that booklet we passed around the other month at this meeting? What legislation would have passed and why? And driven by sort of what philosophy that goes counter to that? To say, yeah, empower folks to do whatever they want, which which is fine. But clearly, there's a trend that I, as a board member for the past 12 years, wasn't aware of. And so I, yeah.
Just like a big cyber charter vouchers, and that's kind of the next thing that we need to that, we still have a voucher push right now at the state level, but there is a big homeschool trend and movement that is, has political weight to it.
Yeah. I mean, I've always been aware of like very high caliber athletes, right? Because the school schedule doesn't allow them to train in the morning and train in the evening and live out of state get access to the best coaches in the country and all that kind of stuff. I've always been aware of a a group of homeschool folks who the curriculum here doesn't go fast enough because they have highly gifted students. So I, and I mean, there's other pockets that I'm aware of that seem to be inclined to want to homeschool, fine. But I thought the number was closer to the number of like 10 or 12 or 15 or maybe even 20, 20 kids. To hear that it's well over 100 kids, when our district only educates 1200 kids? I don't know, to me, it's intriguing. It's worth keeping an eye on.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. Couldn't agree more with your sentiments of keeping an eye on it, trying to figure out why, like, that that's absolutely on our radar.
Does anybody ask for?
No.
Maybe that's a story.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan Howard?
Yes.